Roll call.
Bontrager.
Here.
Nichols.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Alt.
Yes.
Brown.
Here.
Next thing is approval of the agenda or correction or dilations on it. Doing a motion or whatever.
A motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Alt.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, yeah, the next one is the approval of the meetings of last year. Any dilations or corrections? And not how about a motion?
A motion to approve the meeting minutes from the previous June 16th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Dean.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Brown.
Abstain.
Any public comments? No, okay, we go to a public hearing.
All set?
All set. You're fine, you're day.
My name is Jerry Adams for the other, for the two gentlemen that don't know me. Used to have John's position and as you all know, Abigail is on medical leave right now. So, city asked if I would come in and work a few days a week and so I agreed to do it. And John gave me the pleasure of working with the zoning board of appeals. So, I'm going to make the presentations tonight. And as I think you're probably aware, in authorizing a variance, and both of these are setback variances, it does require a vote, an affirmative vote of four of you. The state statute is very clear that in authorizing a non-use, a dimensional variance, requires an affirmative vote of a majority of the full board. Unfortunately, our full board is seven, but we are missing some, we have some vacancies, but nonetheless, because our board is made up of seven members, a majority of that is four. So, four of you have to vote in the affirmative in order to approve a variance. And with that, I just want to make a fairly brief presentation using the overheads. First one is a dimensional variance application submitted by Randall Myers. Mr. Myers is here tonight, by the way, so likely if you have any questions, he'll, he can follow up. And the address of the property is 108 Shore Lane. The, the property is located on Lake Cadillac. It's on the, the north shore of Lake Cadillac. And as the, the graphic shows, that's the one with the green circle. That is the property we're dealing with. We'll be talking about not only that property, but we'll also be briefly talking about some of the other properties in the, the local neighborhood there with. One of the things about lakefront lots, and you'll probably hear me say this again in a few minutes, but they're treated a little bit differently from the standpoint of how they're developed. And with lakefront lots, such as those on Lake Cadillac, the area between the dwelling, between the home and the, the water, is what is referred to under the zoning ordinance as the front yard. That's your basic front yard. And as such, it's, the ordinance is very restrictive on what you're able to, to do in that front yard. And the primary reason, I think you can understand, is if you own a, a home on the lake, you want some visibility, you want to be able to see the water. And so, the front yard, the waterside gets treated somewhat similar to the front yards of homes that, that don't have lakefronts. In the case of, again, lakefront lots, the area between the home and the street is what's known as the road front yard. Or for all intents and purposes, it's treated very closely to what you would typically think of as a rear yard. And again, you're going to see that again in just, just a few minutes. The property is zone R1, one family residential. And the zoning ordinance requires from that road front yard, requires a right, or requires a setback of 35 feet from the street right-of-way. We'll be talking a lot about right-of-way versus where the curb line is. The right-of-way essentially is the same or is coterminous with a person's property line. And the existing home and the attached garage that's associated with it right now, they are essentially 35 feet from the right-of-way. So, very compliant with the ordinance requirements. As I stated, road front yards are treated as rear yards for development. Again, they're somewhat comparable to the, the rear yards of parcels not possessing waterfrontage. And those yards, for example, may be used for the placement of detached accessory structures. You're going to see some photos a little later, but that's where you can put your storage sheds, fencing, and other, other such features, as opposed to the lakefront side. And again, you're going to see this again in a few minutes, but under zoning, those detached structures may actually be placed three feet under zoning from the side lot lines as well as from the, the road front lot line. And again, I'll have some pictures a little, little later. What's being proposed tonight is, Mr. Myers would like to construct, or would like to expand, I should say, his garage, adding an attachment to it that will extend, based on his site plan, 20 feet into that rear yard or road front yard area. And, and he can elaborate on this more fully, but it's my understanding he wants to use it for parking of vehicles, storage of vehicles, the storage parking of recreational equipment and so forth, which is pretty typical for lakefront properties. Again, just an example, the, if you look to your, your left says 35. The current setback that he has is from his property line, which is the red line, is 35 feet, that's compliant with the R1 district. He's looking to put into place, in addition to his garage, it would extend out towards the road 20 feet. He would still retain 15 feet of, of property or a setback for the parking of, of vehicles. He actually has between the house and the, the curb, somewhere between 38 to 41 feet. Now, that's based, by the way, on the city's GIS aerial maps. We didn't actually go out and do a survey. And you're gonna, you're gonna see dimensions throughout. We use the aerial, the GIS aerials. They're fairly accurate, but there is a little bit of distortion, but it's not going to impact what I'm going to be saying tonight. So, there is, there is still, there's significant distance that will be retained, that will be in, in use for driveway. Something of interest, and again, you're going to see another slide a little later. The one on the left shows the addition that, that is being proposed. And ultimately, if it's approved, you would still retain 15 feet of setback from the, the property line. He has the potential, as any of the property owners along here do, he has the potential to actually put in a detached accessory building of almost twice the size, essentially anywhere on that rear yard. And again, you'll see this later. And he can be under zoning within three feet of the, of the lot line. So, when we start looking at such things as visual impacts, compatibility and so forth, I want you to remember that he has the potential to put a, a fairly large structure having it set out there in a rear yard. So, it's not as though, you know, it's either this garage or nothing. But I think visually, what he's proposing to do personally is much more compatible with the neighborhood than what he could do, should he want to. Just an example, for instance, this is a nearby neighbor. And you can see between the house and the street, there is an accessory building. They've used their road front yard for the placement of a, of a detached accessory building, as can any of the owners along here. In terms of his abutting neighbors, we looked at the, at the setbacks of the homes from property lines. And I think this is extremely important. The, the nearby homes, and it's shown by the, the orange, of the four nearby homes, none of them meet the 35 feet setback requirement. Mr. Myers is the only one that does. So, and I think this is very important from the standpoint that if a variance were to be issued, a setback variance, is not being granted a, a privilege or a right that has not been, for whatever reason, extended to the other property owners. Something that's a little unique about this area, the typical road right-of-way in the city of Cadillac, with some exception, is 66 feet. Within that 66 feet, you have the paved, the street. You have, in some cases, sidewalks, utilities and so forth. There are a few areas that are larger than that, but, but not many. And they tend to be uniform throughout a block. And for some reason, when this particular area was platted, developed, the, the right-of-way was modified significantly. It goes from 66 feet to approximately 112 to 115 feet. And that probably ended back down to 66. That probably has something to do with why the surrounding houses are somewhat, do not meet setbacks as required. I don't know that for certain, but it's kind of a unique feature, a unique setting for, for street systems. Just some examples of surrounding homes, I already mentioned this, but again, here's a neighboring home to the east. That red line shows the actual property line. And you can see they're encroaching in the required setback. Another home on the other side, again, the setback is shown by the red line. And they're, they don't have the, again, the 35-foot distance they're encroaching in the setback. Here again, there's a, a neighboring home with an attached garage. And again, you can see that it's very near, near the property line. The reason I present these is just to indicate that what's being requested tonight is not unique to this particular neighborhood. We did some, some calculations. The existing setbacks of the nearby homes from their property lines range from somewhere around two, probably two to four feet to 24 feet. But the average setback was about 12 feet. And what the applicant is proposing is a setback that's 15 feet. So, three feet greater than what the average is in this particular neighborhood. Also, very importantly, that with the variance, if it's granted, it will not reduce the ability of the site to comply with the residential parking standards of the ordinance. The ordinance requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit. He'll still be able to satisfy those, both within the garage as well as on his, his property within the, the property line or the road right-of-way. We feel, when we looked at the findings that you need to, to review as a zoning board of appeals relative to the consideration of variances to we just mentioned, the third, we found that the area and visual impacts of the addition, we felt was significantly less when compared to the potential to put a detached rear yard structure, which is permitted by ordinance, which he can do without need of a variance. Also, we didn't feel that this particular project would significantly impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. Still very significant surrounding setbacks, which will be retained. Again, just want to show you, the green being the addition, more or less, that he's proposing. Those yellow areas, again, he can have, without seeking a variance, he can place an accessory building anywhere within those yellow areas that's about twice the size of what he wants to do within three feet of the property lines. So, just want to show you what potentially is available. And again, staff believes that what he's proposing would be much more conducive to the, to the character and quality of development that's occurring in the neighborhood. Fifth, the variance will not increase congestion on the public streets. The use per se is not anticipate to generate vehicular traffic. It's not a, like a commercial use where you're going to see additional traffic. It's a garage expansion. The variance, number six, will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. As with structures like this, the addition will be subject to local building codes. And it will retain adequate side and rear yard setbacks. Seven, almost finished here, folks. The variance is not anticipated to diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area. We felt the use, the request is very consistent with neighboring sites, as indicated by the photographs. And lastly, the variance is not anticipated to impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. Again, these are straight from the zoning ordinance. I went ahead and put together a motion, I didn't fill in the blanks. But essentially, after you hear Mr. Myers, if he's willing to, or wishes to speak, and open the public hearing afterwards for the public, you will need to adopt a motion. And I thought maybe it would be helpful, just put together a possible motion based on the following findings, whatever those might be. And you have to identify those, such as what is found in the staff report, if you were to agree with them. It was moved by, supported by, to approve, denied. And I won't read this whole thing, this particular variance. And you do have the opportunity, if you feel it's necessary, to apply conditions, if there are any, but you don't have to. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'll be here after, a little later, if you have questions, so. And again, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Myers is here, I don't know if he wants to speak or not.
Just take your name and address for us, please.
My name is Randall Myers, my address is 108 Shore Lane. First, I must say thank you for your time and, and your, your willingness to serve our community. And thank you to the city zoning group for putting together some information and passing that information on to me as I consider this, this addition. My first comment is, I hope it doesn't negate everything if you spelled my last name incorrectly.
Ooh, sorry.
Okay, so it's M-Y-E-R-S. I don't want to void, null and void, everything that's been done, done because it was misspelled. But I do appreciate you having the time to listen to me. The, is it possible to bring up one of the aerials that shows the, the lot? Our house, yeah.
You go back to?
Yeah, back to one, there we go. Our house was, is, was the only empty lot, is the only house that was built on the street since the cul-de-sac was put, put in. Years ago, there was West Shore Lane, which went north and south. And that was vacated and, and the, the cul-de-sac was, was installed. So, we're the only house that had to basically meet the setbacks and the standards because it is newer than the others. Even though it's 93, it, it was the newest one on the, on the, the street. Since then, the house to our west, which is, was at 110, requested a variance, which was granted. We did not object, was granted to them. So, they could build a larger garage on theirs and you'll see that it protrudes further forward. My goal in doing this and other, my other proposals has been to have the least impact on the community, the neighborhood as I possibly can, and keep it aesthetically a very positive experience. I provided to the city pictures, standing at the corner, what the new addition would be, looking both ways, to make sure that I didn't block anybody's view or anybody's window access to see the street. And it does not, it doesn't impose any restrictions at all. The, I, I think my goal, of course, is to give myself more storage. I have classic cars and obviously boats and trailers. And I think if you ask either of my neighbors, they'll tell you that there's always one or two trailers or cars in our driveway. Even with this addition, I hope that it improves the aesthetics, they're not setting out so much. And with the addition, I still have 41 feet to the curb, allowing me double depth of a car plus the width, even after the addition would be added on. Because of the street alignment and so forth, it's now 61 feet to the, to the curb from my garage. So, I feel that it's still a very appropriate addition without changing or altering much of, of the appearance in the neighborhood. And of course, we'd use the same facade as we, as the rest of the house. Something that wasn't mentioned, that has been mentioned in the past in other discussions is the grade is level, it's flat, there's no change, there's no runoff issues. There's a city, a, a street drain in front of our house, nothing gets changed. It's totally flat, it's actually already the cement pad for our driveway is exist. So, nothing changes from an elevation standpoint at all. So, hopefully you'll see fit to allow me this variance so we can add a little garage space and still make the, the neighborhood look pretty. Thank you for your time.
Got any questions for him? Okay. Now we'll open the public hearing for the public. Got any, anybody wants to make any comments? Please state your name and address.
My name's Kelly Hutchinson and I live at 107 Shore Lane, or that's the property I own. My parents live at 106 Shore Lane. And their property was discussed here. I, I just wanted to clarify something. They asked for a six-foot variance and was denied by this board. And they had to come back and ask for a three-foot variance, and that one was approved. They had suffered a fire in their house and they wanted to, the, the back part was where the fire was, so they were remodeling after that. And they just wanted to make the garage big enough to park my dad's pickup truck in because the heating system is in the garage and it takes up room. And the six-foot variance would have been perfect, they were denied that. Someone had said they were granted a variance, they weren't granted the variance that they were asked for. And when they asked for the three-foot variance, that was granted. Still can't park the pickup in there, it's not big enough. But I just, I, I just wanted that clarified because everyone seems to think that everybody has variances that were granted. No, no, they weren't. And I, I mean, it was a much smaller variance, obviously. But I, I do not have a problem at all with Mr. Myers adding on to his house, garage or, or whatever. That's, that's not what my problem is, I just want it to be fair. I don't want it to be, well, one person came and asked and had a presentation prepared by the city for them. Another person came and asked, didn't have that, so the board said, oh, we're not going to give it to you. I don't know what the reasoning were, I'm pretty sure you were on the board at the time.
I was, I remember it.
And you remember it.
I know, I remember the reason.
But that, that, that was all that I wanted to say. I wanted to make that clarified because that seemed to not be clarified in, in everyone who spoke prior to me. But that's all that I had to say.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
I just want to make one point. There were three letters of correspondence, two of them were in your packet. One was on your table when you came in tonight because it didn't come in until today. So, I just wanted to, for the record, indicate that there were three letters of correspondence on, on the cases.
Two of them are for the other, the other variance. And the one should be in your packet, in fact, it was from Kelly Hutchinson. Yes, that was in the, that was in your packet.
Any questions? Comments? And we'll close the public part and open up for us. Got any questions or ideas or anything, a variant, I mean, a motion or? I can't make the motion, so.
I can make the motion. So, based on the findings found in the staff's report and the peculiar, exceptional conditions in Mr. Myers' property, I motion to approve the variance as presented to the board.
I second that motion.
Okay.
Alt.
No.
Dean.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bontrager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next stop is, say, both city for their, the building permit. Okay, Jerry, it's up to you next.
Okay. The, the next application or request, again, it's a, a dimensional variance application. And hopefully, Mr. Giesemann, I've got your name spelled properly. The, as the, as the slide shows, dimensional variance application, Giesemann Real Estate Development, Inc., Jeff Giesemann, 230, 230 Seneca Place. Mr. Giesemann is here. And again, if you have any questions or if he wishes to provide additional information, I'm sure he, he's available here to do so and would be willing. Okay, let's, again, go through the slides. Not sure how well this one's going to be. If you look kind of in the middle, at the corner, be the, the southeast corner of Seneca Place in Chesapeake, I put a little green star, I don't know if you can see it, but that is the location of, of this particular site. There'll be some blowups of that in, in just a second. As you can see though, generally speaking, it's a fairly developed area. Generally speaking, the majority of the lots are developed with single-family homes. To the, to the west, you do have a, a manufactured home park as well. And again, we'll, we'll look at these things a little more fully. Mr. Giesemann is proposing construction of a single-family dwelling, which is permitted within this particular zone, district. The dwelling, according to his site plan, would be 24 feet by 52 feet, which is essentially 1,248 square feet. And again, I'll have another graphic in a second. But he's requesting a side, what is called a side-street setback variance from Chestnut Street of two feet, allowing for a setback of 18 feet, as opposed to the required 20 feet. And 20 feet, on corner lots, you have a situation where you essentially have two front yards. And one of those has to be designated as the front yard. The other is designated as what is referred to as a side, kind of a side-street front yard, so to speak. The designated front yard has to meet the front yard setbacks of the ordinance, which in this case happens to be 25 feet. The other street side yard has to meet a setback of 20 feet. And the way that he is proposing to fig, configure, position the home, the Chestnut Street would be the, the side yard that requires the 20 feet. He wants to be 18 feet back if possible. So, again, he's asking for a variance of two feet. Little better example, the yellow, the 25 feet on the left there you can see is, would be the front yard, that's consistent with the R2 zone standards of the ordinance. So, he's compliant there. And then along the north there, the 18 feet, again, the requirement for a side street is 20 feet. So, he's seeking a, a two-feet variance. Again, the parcel is zone R2, one family residential. Something of interest here, and, and that's why we're, we're talking about, or going to talk about it. The R2 zone actually requires a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet. And you may, in reading the staff report, you may have found, well, this site only has 6,350 square feet. What we have here is that when this neighborhood was originally subdivided decades ago, it was done in small parts, parcels or small lots that averaged about 5,000 to 6,350 square feet. And that's what this particular lot has. And so, you had a lot of, a lot of small lots. And what has happened however, is that And so you had a lot of, a lot of small lots, and what has happened however is that over time, before many of these lots were developed, they were combined, or an individual would buy, let's say, half of another lot, combining it. So many of the lots in this area actually exceed nine thousand square feet. You have a few what I call remnant lots, not very many, that still meet the old platting requirements that were done back then. But even so, even though it's undersized, the ordinance, the zoning ordinance recognized, we're going to end up someday with lots that were, that pre-existed, that were pre-platted, they haven't developed, and they're going to be undersized. The ordinance, or the framers of the ordinance, took this into account and said, you know, assuming the use of these lots is consistent with zoning, which in this case it is, this is a residential zone district, he wants to put in a home, the ordinance allows undersized lots to be used, provided they have the proper lot width along the various lot sizes, and this one does. He meets the requirements for the front yard as well as the side yard, so he's very consistent there. And so the lot is billable, even though it's undersized, the lot is billable without seeking a variance under the, under the ordinance. One of the unique things too about our zoning ordinance regarding undersized lots, you do, if you're building on an undersized lot, you do have to meet the R2, in this case, the R2 setback requirements, and that's why Mr. Giesemann is seeking a variance. Instead of being twenty feet from the street, he wants to be eighteen feet. But the ordinance has language in it that specifically states, as I've indicated here, that setback variances for undersized lots may be considered by the ZBA. I think the framers of the ordinance recognized some of these small lots are probably going to have some difficulty meeting the setback requirements, and so we want to let people who own them, who want to develop them, recognize you can go to the ZBA. Now, it doesn't mean the ZBA is going to grant a variance, but it just was interesting, I felt, it, it says, you know, you can go to the ZBA. So it's, it's basically telling people you may have a relief valve. Again, it doesn't say you're going to be granted a variance, but the language is interesting. Again, we're looking on the north side, he wants to place the house eighteen feet back from the, from the lot line as opposed to the twenty feet. I mentioned, over the years, many of the neighborhoods, vacant lots were combined, resulting in a range of dwelling sites in terms of size. What we found was that the surrounding parcels, the ones surrounding this, the home, or I'm sorry, this vacant lot, they run from about eighty-five hundred square feet to almost twenty-seven thousand square feet, and that's due to the combining that occurred years ago. And again, this is one of the rare parcels that did not get combined nor developed. All of the, again, all of the surrounding parcels, as shown by this, are developed. The lots to the north, south, east, and west of this vacant lot are fully developed with I can skip this one, I've already really gone over it. Again, he meets the front yard setback requirement of twenty-five feet, he, based on what he wants to do, he doesn't meet the side-street yard requirement of twenty feet, wants to be eighteen feet back, so again, he's seeking a, a two, a two-foot variance. This one, I can go through it quickly. Again, the next few here. If we look at, at the lot in general and what he wants to do, again, just to emphasize, the required setback for the front yard is twenty-five feet, he's going to meet that. Along the south lot line, the required setback is eight feet, he's going to meet that. The east lot line, the required setback is thirty feet, he's going to have fifty feet, so he's going to meet that. And the side-street, the Chestnut Street, the requirement is twenty feet, and he's seeking an eighteen-foot variance. Now you might say, well, why doesn't he just turn his house so he can take that thirty-foot or where he has fifty feet? He can't do that, he wouldn't be able to put a house on the site. What we found is that within three hundred feet of the subject parcel, and why three hundred feet? Everybody within three hundred feet of this property was notified of this particular variance request, so I thought, well, let's look at the properties within three hundred feet. We found that five of those properties are non-compliant with the setback requirements of the R2 Zone District. Three of the lots range in size from nine thousand square feet to seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand five hundred square feet, so they're all larger, but even so, three have side yard setbacks that vary from twelve to eighteen feet, he's looking for eighteen feet, and two have front side yards, or two have front yard setbacks ranging from twenty to twenty-three feet versus the twenty-five that's required. So the immediate area does have a fair number of home sites which do not meet the setback standards of the ordinance. Again, I just selected two, just to the north of him. For example, the house right across the street on Seneca doesn't meet the front, set, a front yard setback requirement, shown by the yellow, and then across the street there on the left, again, that particular house doesn't meet the side yard setback requirements. So it's not as though we're considering something that would offer him a right or a privilege pursuant to setback that has not been made available to others. Some of the things we looked at, we thought, well, can he buy additional property to increase the size of his site? And essentially, given the developed character of the parcels that he directly abuts, 226 Seneca and 225 Vic, they're both developed, so, four homes. And also, or I should say, and he has rights away on this, the street side, Seneca Place and Chestnut Street, and the city's not going to sell him right away. So really, he has no opportunity to, you might say, increase the size of his parcel, so that was not a given. We looked at the proposed design of what he is anticipating doing, staff felt that it was generally consistent with neighborhood home designs, the area construction trends, and the city's need for housing. We thought about, well, you know, he can downsize. The proposed home, as I mentioned, is one thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet. What we found is that in the neighborhood, it's already less than that of many of the nearby homes that tend to range in size from sixteen hundred square feet to about twenty-three hundred square feet. So he already is building a home that is a bit smaller than what is found in the area. We looked also, like we did with the other variance, we looked at the standards that are found in the ordinance, this one deals with light and air. We felt the variance will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. Again, the right-of-way widths, both to the north and to the west, sixty-six feet, are essentially open areas, and he also has very sufficient setbacks on the other side, so it's not as though this home is going to negatively impact from the standpoint of light and air surrounding properties. The variance will not in reasonably increased congestion in public streets. Essentially, based on the ITI Institute of Traffic Engineers, on their trip generation, Generation Manual, which we always use, the average home today generates about nine-point-six trips, I don't know how they get to point six, but nine-point-six trips per day per dwelling unit. Both these streets are more than adequate to accommodate that minimal amount of traffic, plus this site has been designed to accommodate a home, and the streets have been also designed accordingly. One of the letters that was received, essentially negative towards the variance, there was concerns that the driveway would create interference with movements within the street intersection of the nearby two streets, and we've looked at the site, there's more than ample opportunity and will to locate the driveway away from the intersection, no different than any of their homes in this area, so we didn't feel that was a concern whatsoever. The variance, again, is not anticipated to increase the danger of fire or public safety. Again, the dwelling is going to have to obtain a building permit, which will then subject to various building code and fire safety standards, so will mitigate those particular concerns. In terms of neighborhood impacts, again, we have two streets that abut this site with sixty-six feet of right-of-way, that large amount of right-of-way, plus the setback that he's proposing, is more than sufficient to create clear vision areas, so to speak, and the other setbacks are compliant with the zoning ordinance. And again, the dwelling is consistent with the purpose and the character of the R2 Zone District. They want homes, this is a home, it's worth zoned for. We felt this dwelling will add, will occupy a vacant parcel, therefore will add value to the site and the neighborhood. It's going to be a single-family dwelling, which is consistent with the uses of the surrounding development, and the variance we found is less than that that has been afforded to those other homes which have received, have either received setback variances or were built prior to the current ordinance and don't meet the standards. Basically, his request is less than those others. As I indicated earlier, the use is permitted by right in the Zone District, and is permitted, and is consistent, I should say, with the residential character of neighboring properties. The variance and what is being proposed will provide opportunity for the construction of a, of a home of modest size on a site that is historically vacant, and again, the use of the property is regulated via zoning and other codes by factors governing noise, blight, and so on and so forth. And again, the reason I'm going through these is because the ordinance requires us And then lastly, as noted by Section forty-six, six-six-five of the zoning ordinance, the, the ordinance is very supportive of the use of undersized lots of record. It knew that when the zoning ordinance came into effect, we're probably going to create some situations of where we're going to have some smaller lots that, for all intents and purposes, can be built upon, provided they meet an adequate size and setback, and so I think, you know, the ordinance is, I don't want to say it's supportive of variances, but it is supportive of the use of smaller lots. And again, we put together a, a basic motion, I don't need to read this, but essentially, Mr. Giesemann is requesting a side yard setback variance of two feet to allow the construction of a home, and that variance would be from the required twenty feet off of Chestnut Street. The other letter that we got, or note that we got, was concerning the proximity of this lot and this home to, and let me go back here quickly, to, let's see, that might do it, to a, let me find a better one, to a fire hydrant, and I'll use this one. I'm not sure, there is no issue with respect to the fire hydrant, but if you see, you take the twenty-five feet, I don't have the fire hydrant on here, but if you go up, go upwards north, and you see where I have the, the, the black line north there, that's about where the fire hydrant is, okay? It's kind of in the corner of the intersection, on public property, so the, the fire hydrant isn't an issue with respect to this particular, the development of this property and this particular variance. With that, again, Mr. Chair, Mr. Giesemann is here, if, in case he has, wants to make any comments or additional information, or wants to correct anything that we've said.
Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Jeff Giesemann, 316 South Thirty-Seven Road here in Cadillac. Thanks, everybody, for your time tonight. Thank you to John and Jerry for presenting and doing the legwork to get these facts together. I have been trying to build affordable housing units in Cadillac for the last half dozen years, and I've done about a dozen of them. There aren't too many other builders building in this area because of cost and other things, and I'm trying to do everything I can to still bring some of the needed housing. I mean, you turn on the news, you turn on anything, we know we have a housing shortage. This lot I saw was available on a public tax sale, or a Wexford County tax sale, a couple of years ago, and I thought, boy, that's a nice location. Did a little research and had a conversation with Mike Coia when he was still in the department, and he initially said that it wasn't a conforming lot. But I had had the plat, the Shady Side plat from the Register of Deeds, that showed that it was fifty feet, not, not the forty-six that they had on record from the GIS, and because of that, he said, well, then it would be considered conforming, and he pointed out that, or however, with the corner lot restrictions of the, both the front yard setback and the side-street setback, you know, we would have a very narrow house. And to do anything less than twenty-four feet is really hard to do to accommodate a family. And in, in our discussions, we looked at a couple other houses on the GIS and noticed that three or four in the immediate area were not conforming, and in fact, cut into the setback further than what I'm proposing. And, you know, it's a beautiful lot that would make a family a wonderful home, and I don't see how it would detract in any way from any of the neighbors' views. I, too, stood on the corner of each corner of the properties along the street, and no line of sight will be affected in any of the directions from anything that was constructed. The twenty, really, the twenty-five foot setback off of Seneca, which is to the west, that sits back far enough that that doesn't, you know, the House Kitty corner across Chestnut, which is also a corner lot, that actually sits out seven or eight feet further than what the setback requires. So I don't see any negatives for the area as far as line of sight or aesthetics or... And so that's why I'm requesting the variance, hoping that the board can see the benefits of it, and I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions that you might have.
I have a couple of questions for you, sir.
Okay.
Where do you propose to put the driveway?
The driveway would be in, in that area to the east of the tan section, which represents the house.
Because of right from that point, yeah.
To the right of it. It would come in there, it, if, with the rear yard setback, I'm limited on the size of an attached garage I could put there, I could put a larger garage if it's a detached dwelling and accessory building. So again, I think like Jerry pointed out, the driveway, wherever it is in that area, it's going to be well away from that corner coming in off Chestnut.
All right. The rest of the houses in that area are all stick-built, aren't they? They're not manufactured?
Correct.
Is that what you're proposing to do? Stick-built also?
Um, I'm, I've built all my houses stick-built, but what I am, I am considering doing a modular, which is, I mean, it is a stick-built, it's just built in a facility.
Built to stick somewhere else.
It's, well, it's built in a controlled environment to more exacting standards than I can build in the field. It's Boca, I mean, quality-wise, I, I'm going to use the same company for my new home that I'm building this summer on the property that I live on.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Does not.
Thank you for your time.
Open up for public comments. Say your name and address.
My name is Terry, my name is Terry Gastola, and I live at 223 Seneca Place, which is just across the street. At one House Kitty corner, I can see that corner very well, and I can also hear, I'm sorry, I can also hear that corner very well. It's a very loud corner. Cars come down, Chestnut, stop at that corner and go to the mobile home park, or turn down Seneca. Very, very busy, very active, to the trailer park. Very, very busy, very active, to the trailer park especially, all times of the day and night, very busy corner. Also, it's a route for the emergency vehicles. If there's ever an accident on M-115, the ambulance and the fire truck and the police come down Chestnut, stop at that corner, you can hear them coming for a long way, they stop there, and then they turn and go down Chestnut toward Division, and then out toward M-115. So it's a very loud, very busy corner. It would be very hard for people to live in that house, that close, even two feet closer to the street. It's so loud in my house, and I'm across the street and one down, I'm the blue two-story house. It's loud, it's so loud, sometimes it wakes me up at night. Plus, there are times, especially when they were building the high school, there were dump trucks coming down that street all the time, several times a day, stopping at that corner, turning. It was so loud and such heavy equipment, it would shake my house. And I know I wasn't the only neighbor that heard it. Other neighbors I talked to mentioned that truck, this is a very loud corner. So I just want to say, anybody living in that house, even two feet closer to the street, it'll be a very uncomfortable, noisy corner. Plus dirt, there's dirt from the traffic being that close up on it, plus that fire hydrant. That fire hydrant, if there was ever a fire and they had to use that fire hydrant, or drain it, whatever they do, flush it, it's going to be right there in the corner of their house. They're going to be two feet up closer on it. So that's all I wanted to say. I'm concerned about anybody that would want to live in that house. It'd be just very noisy, very, they wouldn't realize it until they live in it, until they're in it, and then you find out how noisy it is. And if it's a modular home, or whatever you said it would be, I'm concerned about anyone living in that house, it'd be very noisy. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Do you want to go next? Just state your name and phone, um, address.
Kristen Marvin, 226 Seneca. So I am directly south of that. So you can see a little bit of my garage in there, but, sorry, I put some notes on my phone that I'm just going to check at. So as he mentioned, a lot of the lots are a lot bigger, the homes are a lot bigger. Living right next to it, I'm really concerned about the integrity of the neighborhood, having that small of a house, especially a modular house, the concerns to my property and the value of it, especially being so close to the line. I know, I know he's allowed that eight feet, but, and we're more concerned about the 18 feet in this, but that's, that's just a concern that I have with the lot I have. I did want to mention, they talked about a lot of the homes being a lot larger than that. That's not the case with my home. It's, it's about the size of that house that they're proposing, so not in the 2,000-square foot they were talking about. I did also want to clarify, since I am right next, right south of that, I, I wasn't the one who wrote that letter about the concern with backing out of the driveway and the traffic there, but I do agree with whoever that person was, being where I'm at, and that corner being a busy corner. I do often have some difficulty navigating with people turning, and knowing that that would be on the Chestnut portion, they would also have that kind of same issue with people who are then turning right. So I could, I could see that, that causing some congestion in that area. Then the, just in general, just some concerns about that, that yard in general. So it seems like if the driveway is on the right, there's not going to really be a place for a yard with the backyard budding, that eight feet right up to mine, concerned just in general for noise of the property. And once again, with the neighborhood having much larger lots, with that one being so small, concerned at who would buy the property, how it would impact the feel, the aesthetics of the entire neighborhood. That was all I had to say.
Anybody else? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, discuss it to ourselves, get a motion.
Mr. Chair, may I clarify something?
Yeah.
With all due respect, this site could be used for a much smaller house than what Mr. Giesemann is proposing without benefit of a variance. So I hope she realizes that. Basically, he's, he's kind of upscaling, so to speak, what, what could go here, you know, without, without even coming and getting a variance. I could come in and put in a small, a very small home and not have to get a variance. It would be much smaller than, could be much smaller than what Mr. Giesemann is. So I think that needs to be, you know, the size of the home per se is, is not going to be dictated by a variance or not a variance per se. And also too, and if the fire hydrant were to be an issue, I don't think it is, there's plenty of room to slightly move that house to the east if, if need be, and create a slightly larger front yard, so to speak. But I, again, we looked at it, and the hydrant should not be an issue whatsoever. Thank you.
Just a quick, where is that hydrant at? It said right here.
Yeah, it's right in there, yep.
So it's still 18 foot away from the house?
Yep.
Okay. One more clarifying question. So this is an R2, the building standards in R2 are modular or greater?
You can put a modular home in.
Okay.
There's, I can show you modular homes in the R1 District.
Sure. Yeah, 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 I mean, they're, they're, I mean, if you watch online how it's made on modular homes, actually, very well-controlled in their environments and how they put them together.
Yeah, there's a lot of modular homes out there, you don't, they're modular homes.
Yeah, they'll be built two-by-six walls, or two-by-eights, or greater.
Can I add something to that about the modular? One of the reasons, I haven't decided whether to go that route or not, one of the reasons that I've made would be because of the impact. It's a narrow lot, it's a corner, you can get a lot less, we need to get a lot less equipment in there with trucks to come in and set it with two, with a crane and two cases, marriage, the roof together, and do your siding on site. So there should be less of an impact than the way I typically would build a stick, build a house, and all of the traffic around the perimeter of the house.
Yeah. I mean, I was just having to watch the show that they brought in five sections for a modular home. I mean, it's, they're, they're a house. They just have to come in, come in on a trailer.
I think another thing, speaking to the board, if we do approve this variance, 2010 Chestnut, right across the way, has a driveway that we could propose, 230 Seneca, the westmost curb cut of the driveway, not exceed 50 foot from the east side property line, so that we are not, so that the, the entry into the road is not too close to the corner.
Make a proposal?
Sure. Uh, sure, so based, I mean, I can propose, so based on the staff findings and the practical difficulty presented with this property being plotted before the ZBA, and it being 9,000 square feet, I propose we accept the two-foot variance as requested, with the condition that the westmost curb cut of the driveway not go beyond 50 foot from the east property line. So basically, due north of the house presented here.
Can you also put a name on the screen?
Yeah, so the driveway has to enter from here over.
Okay.
Yep, because this is 50 foot from there to there, so to be kind of similar to 2010 Seneca.
It's coming off of Chestnut.
Yeah, that's their only access, I think, to that property.
You got a second?
I have a second.
Von Trager.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay. It's been approved, next step is see, get your building permits.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. Next thing is new business.
Got some sort of housekeeping things to do here, because if you haven't met for a while, there's a need to vote for officers, and I guess you could handle that any way you'd like to, if you would like to stay with the same, same folks, or if other people want to serve, I guess you could discuss how you want to do that. I think we probably, I think we're proposing motions for the chair and motions for the vice chair.
I propose Nick for the chair.
You got a second?
I second that.
Okay.
Does Nick want it?
Nick really wants it.
I've done it for, what, almost 15-plus years?
He really wants it.
I don't mind it. Like I said, I've been on this thing for over 30 years, so, eh, what the heck, let's be...
Okay, ready for a roll call?
Yeah.
Brown.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Von Trager. Nichols.
Guess I got to say yes.
Do you have a vote?
And then the vice chair.
Well, you know, I...
It's me.
Okay.
Would you like to continue to do that?
Sure, Nick's always here.
Who's, who's going to make the motion?
I move Jerry for vice chair.
And I second that.
Nichols.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Von Trager.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Okay, I got, I guess new business is taken care of.
We have the meeting dates.
Oh, meeting dates, oh.
And that's on the last page of your packet, I believe.
Got a motion?
Are these all Thursdays?
Yeah, always Thursday at 5:30, third, third Thursday of the month.
So we can decide to change that?
Yeah, you can, you, you know, you can by vote of a subsequent meeting, if, if something comes up, or you want to combine meetings, or, there's always options to, to make changes. But just to get something on the record, to give some people idea of, of when the routine dates would, would be happening.
Sure. Let me just talk, well, just talking to the board, like, my wife works late on Thursdays, so we have to do, like, childcare now to be on the ZBA, but that's not to say it doesn't change to be another day, so I guess whatever you guys want to do, I'm open to it. I just, right now, Thursdays are not good, but that's not to say in six months from now, Wednesdays won't be good, so it's up to you guys.
I say, it's been Thursdays forever.
I move that we keep the same, same time, same day of the week.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Von Trager.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, old business, any old business.
None that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I have a question, was the last meeting actually June of 2022?
I think so. We, we don't meet very often.
That's really been almost two years.
They know, they, they know we're...
Sure.
I hate, I hate to tell you this, but there's, you'll probably meet next month.
No problem. Like I said, we're usually pretty...
I'm just, you know, there, there's at least one already, there may be two, so...
Okay.
Okay, board member's comments.
I'd like to say I'm pleased to be on the board. I thought it was done very professionally, the presentations and the preparation, and happy to work with you folks and serve the community.
Only comment for me is, like, I said, my wife works late now on Thursdays, my term expires in September, we're, we'll just chat on whether I can continue or not, so, just a heads up, we haven't made a decision yet, but, yeah.
Okay. Public comments. I guess we adjourn.
All right.